Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January seventeenth city council meeting. I'll do this in the Pledge of Allegiance. Donna, can you do a roll up, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman is absent this evening. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Can we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Sherman?
I move that we excuse Councilwoman Sherman, please. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Will be late changes to the agenda. All right. We have any board reports to share? Right. Moving on. Has everyone reviewed the items from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. At this time, we're general public comment. Anyone need to hear any devices, let us know. We have them behind the counter here. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first person is Erin Martinek.
Hello there. Thanks for having me. I want to talk about homelessness and specifically homelessness and mental illness. I know that we have been coming up and talking about it a lot, and that's because there are people in the streets and in the shelters that are not getting any rest or respite from their homelessness. And so it's our job to really bring it to light of those, to those of us who sleep in warm houses, comfy beds every night. We could be reminded. So let's talk about mental illness. Mental illness comes in many forms. There is depression, anxiety. We've all been depressed, right? We've all had a disappointment, had the rug pulled out from under us. Been afraid to go on, been unmotivated to get up and do the next thing. That's depression, and that's a mental illness technically. So when we say mental ill or mentally ill or mental illness, that's one of them. Anxiety is a mental illness. So anxiety and depression affect about twenty-five percent of the population, and in the homeless, fifty percent of the population, okay, specifically forty-five, I'm rounding up to fifty. So double, and you can imagine if you were homeless, how you would be depressed and anxious every day for your safety, for your life, for tomorrow, for how you're going to survive, or if you're going to survive, or if you want to survive. So significant mental illness are things like schizophrenia, bipolar disorder. Used to be called manic depression, and that's when people can become out of touch with reality. Psychotic, have delusions, hear voices, hallucinations, and that affects about twenty-five percent of the homeless. It is important to me and to the folks at Community Lifeline that we do whatever we can to make it possible for people who are unhoused without housing to try to recover, to try to find a bridge to housing. So the most powerful thing to end homelessness is, of course, to provide housing. The second is let's surround our unhoused with support, with services, with a possibility of having a bridge to being housed, to being employed, to having a life that's worth living. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our next speaker is Athena Ayers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here as always. I appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak to you. I come this evening with both hard news and good news, so I'll get the bad stuff out of the way first. I think that it's important just for the aspect of communication to let you guys know what kind of things we come encounter with on a regular basis, especially pertaining to homelessness and how that impacts our community. Just, I mean, today's the seventeenth, and within this month alone, we've already lost three of our participants. One is being investigated for homicide. The other one was induced by severe withdrawals, trying to get clean and sober. And the other one was a fatal hit vehicle accident. He was hit by a car. So we're seeing some very tragic situations happen. Obviously, that takes a huge toll on us at Community Lifeline to see our participants experience such a thing. It becomes our responsibility to reach out to their family members. Tammy had to have some pretty hard phone calls over the last week or so that are difficult, and it also takes an impact on our surviving clients. People are afraid, you know, being homeless increases the risk of illness and death, and to see the people around you dying at such a fast rate is a pretty scary thing to experience. So I just want to bring that to your attention. It does impact our local resources as well, our hospitals, our law enforcement, our first responders. We are extremely appreciative of those folks, the police department, and with the fire department EMS, Mason General Hospital, we know that everybody is doing the best that they can. But I'm just hoping that these conversations can bring awareness, but also hopefully a light at the end of the tunnel so that we can understand the urgency and come together to think about and talk about and come up with some real solutions. Moving kind of away from that and into some of the lighter side of things. Community Lifeline is opening our Recovery Cafe, Mason County on February first. We're doing that through our ribbon cutting with the chamber, and we're super excited for that. I hope that all of you guys can attend. We will be doing a lunch. The hope is, is that by offering people a place where they can be and be surrounded by recovery services, whether it be sobriety from substances or recovery from mental health, that they're in a safe environment, and we can kind of cut back on some of those sad, sad endings. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one person via Zoom, and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director for Quixote Communities. Washington State's twenty-twenty-two point in time count indicated that nearly thirteen thousand people are living unsheltered throughout Washington State. That's up from ten thousand five hundred in twenty-twenty. This also follows a trend of skyrocketing housing prices and not enough housing supply. What is driving up homelessness in Washington? Rents have increased due to low vacancy rates. Every one hundred dollars increase in rent is associated with a nine percent increase in homelessness. In Washington, forty percent of households are paying more than thirty-five percent of their income on rent. And between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the median house price in Washington increased by thirteen point seven percent. As of twenty twenty-one, the state had a housing deficit of eighty-one thousand four hundred units. Preliminary population data suggests an additional one million housing units will be needed by twenty forty to keep up with the population growth. That requires building fifty thousand units a year. Governor J. Inslee has released his twenty-three twenty-five budget proposals, urging legislators to continue prioritizing investments in housing homelessness and behavioral health. At the heart of his housing proposal is a referendum that would allow legislators to front-load four billion dollars worth of housing construction over the next six years. The underlying capital budget will fund approximately twenty-two hundred housing units, twenty-three through twenty-five, and the four billion referendum would add approximately fifty-three hundred additional units during that time, as well as an additional nineteen thousand units. Inslee proposes using the funding to address several housing gaps. Emergency supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness, housing for people with special needs such as developmental disabilities or chronic mental illness, community capacity for behavioral health, including a new diversion recovery center for people with behavioral health needs and criminal justice involvement, affordable housing units for lower and middle income workers making less than eighty percent average median, and also down payment and closing costs assistance for low income and first time buyers. The referendum proposal, in addition to the housing proposals, seeks to increase density near transit corridors and streamline the permitting process to speed up housing projects. I bring these up because people who want to know what to do, I'm suggesting write to your legislators in support of this, and also support the City of Shelton's efforts to increase the development of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else sign up?
No, Mr. Mayor.
In the audience that has not signed up that would like to speak. All right. We're on to our business agenda. Public Works Director Jay Harris, information is about a rate study contract.
Most sides speak tonight. That's okay. Good evening, Mayor Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So in two thousand seventeen, the city last completed the water and GFC rate study. That was for the two thousand eighteen through twenty twenty-three rate period. We need to adopt sewer and water rates for twenty twenty-four. It'll probably be from twenty twenty-four to maybe twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-seven. That'll sort of be a council decision on the length of period. Five years a little long. The last rate study went out five years. It's getting a little long usually. We just recently are near completion of the comprehensive plans as for water and wastewater. And so we have a really good idea of the capital improvement projects that need to happen near term and longer term, which can obviously be included in the rate study. More importantly, probably the general facilities charge study, because that's what developers pay when they pick up building permits and they buy their capacity in the system, basically. So we got a proposal from Financial Consulting Solutions Group, that's FCS for short, and for seventy-four thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars to complete the studies. They, if you remember, they recently completed the storm drainage rate study, did a real good job on that. We have some permutations, spoke to you, went back and forth a little bit, and got that all resolved. The plan is that FCS and staff will meet you in a study session later this spring to go over what they're sort of talking about, what they're including, you know, in the upcoming rates and GFC charges, and then probably have some public meetings sometime in July or August this summer and adopt rates, obviously, before twenty twenty-four. The funding for FCS for the project is going to be split between the water and sewer funds, and staff recommends to place a resolution on the action agenda for the next meeting.
Donna, we haven't signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
I move to place resolution number one two five seven dash one two two to go on the action agenda, February seventh council.
Second. All right. Comments or questions for Jay?
You mentioned that the, it'll be a kind of a kickoff component, and the council will be involved in that. Great. And just kind of my commentary on that is, you know, we've been through a few of these studies, so, you know, in the last several years, and we've had a couple of moments where it gets kind of like to the five yard line, and we make arbitrary cut to what's recommended. And I think it would be helpful for the council to be involved a little bit earlier on. So we're talking about the inputs to that map. It's a little bit more clearly understood. I just, you know, some of the events of the past, we we've made decisions, and we didn't always have the upfront knowledge. So appreciate being involved in that.
Yeah, the goal is to get the models sort of put together, get them sort of rough framed, and then come to you guys with the thinking.
Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to place resolution number one two five seven dash one two 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 on the action agenda for February seventh council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We have another item for Jay.
I'm here. So Public Works Maintenance Yard, it's been on Pine Street for over seventy-five years. Initially, it started out as a water pump station for the whole city. There's, there's shop there for a long time, too. It's moved into where we do parks maintenance, facility maintenance, water, streets. Everything you can think of is in there. The problem is, is a couple acres shy of room that we need to correctly operate. We have a bunch of people that come and pick up equipment every day. That's stormwater and the wastewater conveyance people. They're housed at the wastewater treatment plant, and so the goal is, is to, you know, build a larger facility, not immediately, but over an extended period of time, and sort of work our way in into it. Williams Architecture completed a planning level study. We presented that to you guys in June of last year. Couple conclusions from the study. The facility should house us and, you know, have a lifespan of about fifty years or more. We're thinking the minimum site is about five acres, about thirty-seven thousand square feet of building is needed. That's shop, administrative space, covered storage, that sort of thing. Heated storage is really important, too. All public works would be combined in the one center. We wouldn't have people working out of remote locations. Some public uses are there. We were thinking the conference room that we would use would be open, and we'd have a public parking lot, and people can use it as a little meeting center. Also, maybe a walking trail around the fence of the facility, you know, maintaining chips or something. Save onsite trees when possible, you know, groves if possible, and, you know, not go in. It's a big yard, a lot of paving, but the goal is to try to save some of those trees up there. Important that the new facility is seismic capable. It'll be one of probably the only buildings in the area. I don't know how old the hospital is. This building was built prior to quite a few seismic codes. A newer school, a gymnasium, those sorts of things might be seismic capable, but we need to rely on that in the Cascadia subduction zone earthquake, that we need to start planning for that. All of our upgrades to wastewater plants, water treatment, that sort of thing, we're going seismic capable. So at least we'll have pieces of a system left, right? But we need this maintenance facility. We're first responders, you know, in windstorms, natural disasters, that sort of thing. So it does need to be sort of central in the community, have multiple access points. And we selected the well one site on Shelton Spring Road. It's sort of met all that criteria. We're looking at designing right now with Williams and permitting for phase one improvements. That's going to be clearing, grading, putting some gravel down, getting a fence around it, putting in the stormwater component. There's detention pond, that sort of thing. A paving entrance, get some yard lighting, and then we're going to use it for the lay down yard to start with. That's where the manholes, a pipe will go, that sort of thing. There isn't high security, right? But we don't really need it. It's hard to leave with a manhole no night, right? So and then eventually, next phases would include the buildings, the shop, covered storage, a fueling station, generator, that sort of thing. So the estimated cost for Williams and their subconsultants is pretty heavy on civil design is a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and ten dollars, and the budget's going to be split between the water, wastewater, street, storm, and EM and R funds, and staff recommends to move the resolution to the action agenda of the February seventh council meeting.
Thank you. Donna, we have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
Move to place resolution number one two five eight dash one two 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 on the action agenda, February seventh council.
Second. All right. Comments or questions? No? All right.
Hey, I have just one comment. I'm really glad to see that it's moving forward, know the necessity with the big one that's supposed to be coming around the corner. So that'll be good to be, hopefully be settled somewhere.
Yeah, Cascadia, the average recurrence interval is one every three hundred and fifty years, and it's been like four hundred years or something. And so not that they, they say that doesn't increase your odds it's going to happen anymore, which I think is a little odd maybe. But, you know, we need to start planning for that day, and hopefully it's not in our lifetime or our children's lifetime, but we need to still plan because we just don't know when things like that are going to happen.
They're very important. Thank you.
I know this is a ten, ten-year project. What is the plans for the property that we're using now?
Yeah, that will be turned into a storage for the city. We have large needs for, it could be parks, facilities, some heated equipment, especially because we're only doing like phase one up there. We're not going to be able to keep all the equipment up there right away because we're going to run out of money for building space. So the goal is to keep that online, and as the city grows, it will sort of be that place where we keep things. Also, the idea is maybe enhance loop field. That had come up in the discussion, that maybe use it for some event parking for vendors and that sort of thing. Maybe allow some covered storage or something that's used for loop field, and just try to add a few amenities also to that space.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to place resolution number one two five eight dash one two 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 on the action agenda for February seventh council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Right. Parks Facility Director Mark Ziegler has information for us about parks and open space area requirements from the residential subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. Bringing back to you tonight, the ordinance number one nine nine four oh nine two two, which updates our parks and open space standards for residential subdivisions. You'll remember, maybe you'll remember, back in November fifteenth, I originally brought the updates to you at the council meeting of that date. Since that time, we have gone through the sixty-day Department of Commerce, Washington State Department of Commerce, sixty-day review, as well as SEPA process, and have not received any comments back at that point. So there's no changes to the ordinance night. But a little refresher, since it's been so long. This is an ordinance that we believe will provide more clarity, not only to city staff and our decision makers here, but also to developers when they want to build a residential subdivision within the city of Shelton city limits. Per the Washington State Environmental Policy Act, we need to address impacts of these residential subdivisions. And that is typically, as most people think, you know, streets and traffic and utilities, the environmental concerns, but might be stormwater or wetlands and things like that, but parks need to be considered within that, that consideration as well. And so this provides that guidance, and those impacts can be mitigated through the growth in our community by adding neighborhood parks to these, to these residential subdivisions. In most instances, these parks would be homeowner association operated. The city does have the ability to take those on if we see the need, and, and, you know, is the, is the right fit, is the right match for, for our community. But in essence, these would be neighborhood parks that serve that residential subdivision with some ability to provide some connectivity through passive recreation areas, too. So if the it meets our pro standard, which is a five acre pro parks recreational space and trails plan, five acre per one thousand resident standard. So what we utilize, what, what the developer would utilize is the, the most recent analysis of the census data that determines the number of people per household. Right? Do a little bit, a little bit of math and get the five acre per thousand that determine the number of acres that they would, they would need to provide for parks and recreational open space, and then what kind of amenities might be in place, like a play structure, washout standard trails for transportation, a sport court and things like that. If it's over two acres, the developer could opt to provide passive recreation, which might be more informal trails and things like that, could provide linkages throughout our communities from one subdivision to another, or to downtown, say, if it's up on the hill, or other, other areas of, of interest within our community, like schools, libraries, other parks and things like that. So that concludes my brief tonight.
Thank you. Any public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We are reading ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending sections one nine point one six point zero four zero and one nine point two seven point zero one zero of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to park and open space area requirements for residential subdivisions.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two, amending parks recreational space for area requirement for residential subdivision.
All right. Comments or questions? Upside. Comments or questions?
I, I think I ran this past year a while back about things called pocket parks in little neighborhoods. Is there a possibility of doing that, just having a little picnic area, a little garden type in they call pocket parks?
Yes, under, under this new ordinance, that is a possibility, depending on the needs of that community. So if it's a small subdivision, certainly, right? It's smaller park that could be considered a pocket park. So and a subdivision at this point is anything over four lots?
So neighborhoods, like?
Yeah, if it's twenty, thirty, forty houses, a small subdivision, such as that would require less parkland, therefore it'd be potentially a pocket park or smaller neighborhood park. Yeah.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
How do we, so I, I like that. You know, essentially a new subdivision that'd be under the control of the HOA to manage, but how do we kind of maintain a level of service? So you know, it's all good. It says they have to build it, but does it say they have to maintain it? And is there a level of service that we?
Yeah. Again, that, that's further down there. Yeah. We hope that the HOA has interest in that, right? Because it's in their best interest to maintain that as part of an amenity for their, for their neighborhood, for their community. The, the, the facility has to be at the time of final plat has to be either constructed or bonded at that point, but there's no bonding for maintenance of the facility itself.
If I could add also, as part of the, the subdivision, as we review the CCNRs that would be attached to that subdivision to the plat, we can make sure that one of the components of the CCNRs is continual maintenance of any structures or any playgrounds.
I guess I'll my hand up, do I? So if somebody doesn't put an HOA in, and it's just fifty homes, then it would be our part. We would take care of it.
Not necessarily.
We would take care of it.
They'd have to, they'd have to form an HOA.
They have to.
New subdivisions, particularly for stormwater ponds, those types of, those types of issues require an HOA as part of that subdivision approval. Because maintaining those stormwater funds are so continual drain on the city resources.
As well as parks resources, including that, right? If, if we looked at this long term and looked at the, the revenue sources that, that we have available to us through the SNPD, which is, is property taxes, we are slowly eroding that away through inflation and, and, and cost of doing business and taking on these new facilities, most likely will further erode the ability to maintain and operate some of those facilities and not be able to meet some of the community needs we have, like trails and water access and replacing the skate park someday and replacing the park play structure as well. So being able to have these HOAs maintain and operate these facilities within neighborhood parks just hopefully increases our ability to, to address some of our community recreational facilities in the future.
This might be off the subject, but how, how would we, would we have any authority over the HOAs and and their bylaws and rules? Because I, I'm not a fan of HOAs.
Yeah.
They've been some crazy boards I've seen over the years that have done some crazy things. Color of houses and, and how long your lawn can be three inches and
We would, we would have the ability to review the CCNRs before they're adopted, and that's where we would have the, the opportunity to make changes to those CCNRs. Once they're adopted, the state of Washington has a I can't remember the exact title of the office, but it's a HOA ombudsman or ombuds where HOA
Uh where HOA disputes go directly to uh that state office. And that office was created because so many communities in the state are doing this uh for the reasons among many others that we stated already. Uh that the uh state office had to be created to resolve those disputes without going to the court every time that there's a, there's an issue. So there is a state, basically a state level arbitration for those types of disputes.
Been a few years since I've been in one, but I I don't have fond memories. Alright, any other comments or questions?
Alright. Parks advisory board was very um positive about moving this forward. Um because it gave a baseline for city tab negotiations for future development. So that was uh something important that I think the park advisory board, citizens of law, um will call public.
Alright. We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two, amending parks and recreation open space and requirements for residential subdivisions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Alright, Ken turn. City engineer Ken Gill has information for about the local road safety plan project.
Good evening, Council. It's good to see each and every one of you at the second meeting in January. Uh tonight is a rehash of what I presented to you in the first meeting in January. Uh in front of you is our project administration agreement for our local road safety plan funding. Last meeting I presented highlighted one of the three projects is the crossing um at Third Street and Riverwood Avenue. So uh the uh two that I want to highlight tonight are uh the crossing at I Street Olympic Highway North. Uh we light it up, um bring the cribs closer together, um and put a flashing beacon up there. And then also at uh Bellevue Avenue S R three, I buy if you were crossing to go over to uh get some new cars at Shelton Outfitters. So both of those projects, highlighting them tonight, uh just because those were, uh we had fatalities at those locations. And this funding with the zero match is an attempt to make those crossings safer in Shelton. I don't have anything else to present.
Thank you, Kenny. Public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
May we have a reading of resolution number one two five four dash one two two two?
Resolution number one two five four dash one two two two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, approving the Olympic Region Local Programs Project Administration Agreement. For systemic pedestrian safety improvements and authorizing the city manager to sign the Olympic Region Local Programs Project Administration Agreement.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number one two five four dash one two 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 as presented.
Second. Right, comments or questions? Okay, go on. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one two five four dash one two 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 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Alright, our next item is project work for resurfacing improvements on Brockdale.
Second item is uh repaving Brockdale from uh Wallace, Nealon, Bullamore to Bastogne Cut Off Road. So this is uh the federal funding share from Mason County that Shelton received back in twenty twenty one. So uh we opened bids, um a little bidder was Miles Resources. Uh they planned to pave it uh when the weather turns pavement weather in March, uh when they pave for Riverwood Avenue. So if you got any questions, uh that's all I had to, right, I'd like to present. I recommend you approve it and award it and go pave that road.
Thank you. Donna, any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
May we have a reading of resolution one two five five dash one two two two?
Resolution number one two five five dash one two two two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a local agency contract with Miles Resources LLC. For completion of the Brockdale Road resurfacing project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number one two five five dash one two 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 as presented.
Second. Alright. Comments or questions?
Just my ongoing theme of cooperation. I hope that we'll continue to have talks with Mason County and our other jurisdictions where we have these types of roadways that. Meet at the county city line so we can make best use of of resources and mobilization costs. So thank you for the work you've done with with Loretta and the commissioners to try to line up our time schedules whenever possible. I appreciate that.
Alright, any other comments? We have a motion to second to approve resolution number one two five five dash one two two as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. We have one more action item from Ken.
Last item is uh construction management services during this federally funded project. Uh the first item you approved tonight was uh uh all the strings. One of the strings is making sure that you dotted all your i's and crossed all your t's. So the federal audit at the very end comes back clean and we are giving any money back. Uh things like uh Davis Bacon Wage Rate Review, uh testing of the right amount of vitamin in the asphalt. And a whole library of other things that are required to do if it was a wash dot project. So uh I don't have anything else to present, uh but I recommend uh that we uh bring onboard R H two for this project. Um and uh let them do the construction management for it.
Thank you. Donna, any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, we have a reading of resolutions one two five six dash one two two two.
Resolution number one two five six dash one two two two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve supplemental agreement number one. To the local agency A and E Professional Services hourly rate consultant agreement. With R H two Engineering Incorporated titled Brockdale Road Resurfacing Project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number one two five six dash one two 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 as.
Second.
Right, comments or questions? Alright, we have a motion to second to approve resolution number one two five six dash one two 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 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief Beeson has impressions about our mail, Mason County Jail Service Contract.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Uh I only have one u- update for you on the uh jail contract. At the same time that I've been presenting to you on the new jail contract, my partners over at Mason County Sheriff's Office have been presenting the contract to the commissioners. This morning, the commissioners signed the contract as is. Um so I ask that you guys consider authorizing city manager Jeff Knighton to sign our contract so we can get this ball rolling.
And this is going from a monthly set rate to a per per night rate?
Correct. It would be per D M contract. We would pay the same rate to put people in this jail, in Mason County Jail, as we do when we transport out to Nisqually. Um some of the other key differences, if we arrest people that are going to go to district court or superior court. Uh in our current contract, uh we pay for those folks until after they're arraigned. And the new contract, as soon as they are booked into jail, they are no longer our responsibility. So the only folks that we're going to pay for if they're booked in are going to be those mandatory arrests that are going to municipal court. Which are usually DUIs and uh the misdemeanor domestic violence charges.
Alright. We have public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
I move to authorize city manager Knighton to sign the updated interlocal agreement, Mason County Sheriff's Office for Jail Service.
Second.
Alright, comments or questions?
And just to clarify, only for the beds we use, unlike paying for beds monthly that can't.
Right, uh we would just pay for the beds that we are using and we would no longer pay for any beds if we aren't using them. We will have no guaranteed beds there.
Any other comments or question there? Just a question, how's Nisqually working out for us?
Uh Nisqually is working out just fine. Uh I'm aware of four folks. Uh I was hopeful that we were gonna put more folks in Nisqually. Uh right after we got the contract, but we've had some injuries that have made our staffing a little bit uh challenging through the beginning of the year. Um but so far, uh that story I told you last time about an arrest. We also had uh an arrest over the last week of someone that uh is very challenging on a regular basis. And is usually not welcome at uh Mason County Jail that was successfully booked and is still at uh Nisqually as of right now. Um so when we do have the resources and I'm working with the city manager to come up with some solutions. So we can be a little, that we can make sure that the city of Shelton is safe with the number of officers that are here and still manage to get people transported. Uh so I anticipate we're gonna come up with solutions for that and we'll be able to do more with the folks that need to be uh placed in jail.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to authorize city manager Knighton to sign the updated interlocal agreement with Mason County Sheriff's Office for Jail Services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay is back on the hot seat.
Good evening, uh the council, uh Jay Harris again, your public works director. So uh this is the property purchase for the sewer lift station. What this is gonna do is allow us to take sewer from the northerly parts of the city and pump them up to the membrane treatment plant. Um we'll be able with an expanded plant, be able to produce a bunch more reclaimed water. Which can be used by the current users are uh state patrol and uh the prison, a little bit from tractor supply. But um more importantly, we'll be able to recharge a Goldsboro Creek aquifer with that through a partnership that uh we have with the Swaps and Tribe. So uh longer term, the station will be running and take a lot of sewer off of the main plant down on the bay. And recharge the aquifer and put the water back uh probably in a better place than discharging into Oakland Bay. So um we're ready to move forward. Uh we have the uh property owners have already signed the contract. Um your approval tonight will allow the city manager to sign the contract and we can go into due diligence period. Um that's the level one environmental uh work, um that's getting uh the title report and you know, go through all of that process. And hopefully close in the next six days on the property purchase. That's my presentation for the evening.
Thank you. Any public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We have a reading of resolution number one two five nine dash one two two two.
Resolution number one two five nine dash one two two two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary. To complete the real estate acquisitions of lots one through nine, block thirty-four of the Mountain View Edition.
Alright, do we have a motion?
To approve resolution number one two five nine dash one two 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 as presented.
Second.
Comments or question? Alright, we have a motion to second to approve resolution number one two five nine dash one two 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 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carries. Alright, we are sitting towards the end of our meeting. Jeff, will you give your city manager report?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Uh a couple of things I want to mention tonight. One, the financial sustainability task force that we are putting together to look at. Uh how we can make our budget more sustainable over the next five years, uh ten years, uh far into the future. Their first meeting will be at the end of this month on January twenty sixth, so we're excited to get that started and off the ground. Uh one of the things that I'm uh really excited about, and I I'm sure council is too, one of your strategic goals is to. Uh protect and maintain our uh uh infrastructure. And we had our E A M kickoff meeting, that's uh enterprise asset management kickoff meeting on January eleventh. And uh we're getting that process started and that is going to pay huge dividends uh in my view for the city going forward. Proactive maintenance, it's uh the best way to save money long term. So this will absolutely enable us to do that long term. Uh next, and I'll talk about this in the looking ahead in a minute. But uh we do have the planned D C R, uh designated crisis responder, uh prepared to start on February eighth. And uh just I'll give you a little bit more of an update on that in just a moment. Um but also the uh parking lot that was just finished right out here. Uh we launched at noon today the count the bricks competition. Uh so we've got eleven guesses, I think. Uh or eleven estimates, I won't call them guesses, uh submitted so far and we're gonna hold that contest open until. Five P M on Thursday and uh the winner of that contest, prices right rules, whoever uh gets closest without going over. Will win a hundred dollar gift card that was generally generously donated by our mayor, uh Anisco. Uh so we're looking forward to that. We'll uh announce the winner on Friday. So uh next on looking ahead, next Tuesday, you will have a study session and you'll hear a presentation from Enterprise. About their fleet management uh tool. And this is uh to contrast with what you heard from F C S group back in late summer of last year. About an E R and R program as opposed to the E M and R we currently run uh to address our fleet needs. So uh you'll hear that on Tuesday and I have a good discussion about how that looks going forward. Uh on February seventh, uh there are several items, uh one of which is the council protocol manual revisions that you discussed in your study session. Uh last Tuesday on January tenth. Um so you'll hear the first presentation on that along with several other presentations, uh or I'm sorry, ordinances. That you will hear about for updates to the Shoreline Master Program and um. Uh best management practices for uh damage prevention. You'll also hear the Peacock Bridge annexation request and this is something that we've been uh looking forward to for quite a while. On action, uh we have several items there on action along with uh the items that are tonight. But the main one that I wanted to mention and this ties directly back to the designated crisis responder I mentioned. Uh we will have on action only the contract with. Uh Olympic Health and Recovery Services to provide that designated crisis responder in partnership with the grant from the Association of Washington Cities that we received. Uh if that is adopted by council in the form that it's presented to you, the D C R will be able to start on February eighth. Uh and I'll make sure you all get a copy of that early so you can take a look. Uh we've reviewed it with our city attorney and gone back and forth with Olympic Health and Recovery Services. And we think we're in a good spot, particularly with the grant dollars that we received from the Association of Washington Cities. So that's what I have for you. That's your next couple of meetings uh through the first part of January and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions or comments for Jeff? The council have any new items for discussion? No? Alright, our next meeting will be February seventh, twenty twenty-three at six P M. We also have a study session on Tuesday, February fourteen to six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-six P M.